...council meeting with the invocation by Counselor Miles.
Father, we come before you tonight, Lord God, with grateful heart, thanking you, Lord God, for the opportunity, Lord God, to represent you today. Lord, as we come forth tonight, Lord, to make decisions on our city's behalf, Father, I pray that you give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, Heavenly Father. Father, I pray, Lord, for a spirit of oneness, Heavenly Father. Lord, I pray, Lord God, that we will be united so that we can prosper our city. In Jesus' precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
Before we have the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, we have some students from Bath High School here, Raphael Finley, Drew Brown, and Taylor McNett, and we'll have them start us off on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
We have an addition to our, add 29014 for an ordinance. The agenda, please.
Second. Motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding ordinance 29014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Resolution 1614.
Expressing the appreciation of the Lima City Council to Reverend B. Lamont Monford, Sr., for his service to the city of Lima as a member of the Civil Service Board.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Resolution 1614 be adopted on its first reading after being read.
Second. The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 1614 on its first reading after being read. I'll have the clerk.
Whereas in 2004, the Lima City Council appointed Reverend B. Lamont Monford, Sr., to serve as a board member on the Civil Service Board; and whereas Lamont was reappointed to serve in this position in 2007, 2010, and 2013; and whereas, while serving on this board, Lamont Monford performed his duties on the Civil Service Board with honesty and integrity, he always based his decisions on what he believed to be in the best interest of the city of Lima; and whereas, after ten years of service on the Civil Service Board, Lamont Monford has submitted his resignation from the Civil Service Board effective October 31st, 2014; and whereas, the Lima City Council would like to thank Reverend B. Lamont Monford, Sr., for his dedicated years of service to the Civil Service Board and the citizens of Lima, Ohio. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Lima, Ohio, that the Lima City Council extends its sincere appreciation to Reverend B. Lamont Monford for his ten years of service on the Lima Civil Service Board.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Dr. Lamont Monford, thank you so much, and really appreciate all you have done. You did a lot of work over ten years. Ten years went fast, though, but thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any, Mr. McLean?
Mr. President, I would like to thank him. You know, I got to know him a little better when he was on the Civil Service Board. He was a man of integrity. He told you the way that he felt, and he meant it. He never mixed words with you. He was always straight and to the point, and I like that. I like that of an individual. So I'm kind of sorry to see you go, and I hope that in the future, if they have issues, they may pick your brain. If you allow that, I'd appreciate it because we have some new ones on there now, and you have a lot of strength with that. So I do appreciate your service to the city.
Is there any further discussion? I would just like to express my appreciation. I think I've known Lamont for most of my 20 years on council, and not just through his ten years on the Civil Service Board. And over that time, I think I've gotten to know you well enough that we've sought each other's advice on various issues. In particular, the work that you've done on the Civil Service Board, as the resolution says, was done with honesty and integrity, but it was also done with a lot of thought, a lot of looking at the past, looking at the future, and trying to develop employment opportunities with an eye towards the future for this community, and a lot of work that's been going on behind the scenes in this community, and I hope that that will continue. So while we're accepting your resignation and we've made an appointment for that vacancy, I'm hopeful that down the road, you'll be visible and accessible for the guidance and friendship that you provided not only counsel, but the city of Lima. Thank you. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Resolution 1614 has been adopted on its first reading by unanimous vote. Dr. Lamont, you'll come forward. Under the consent calendar?
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and Items B and C be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file and approve Item A, and to receive and file Items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Ben's Construction, Inc.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contractual service agreements.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Again, legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for a preliminary consent agreement with ODOT.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with ASC Group.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to make mention that this communication pertains to the Kibbe Street reconstruction, so we're getting another step closer to that project starting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Heffner regarding legislation to amend the strength ordinance.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number five be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Mayor regarding the reappointment of Marv Cowan to the Allen County Board of Health.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
And approved.
Approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six and to approve the appointment. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Insight Public Sector.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Perry Protag.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Stephen Campbell and Associates.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding stock transfer to J. and M. Tacketts at 717 North Jackson Street.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed. The clerk authorized the file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10 to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Human Resources requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Clemens Nelson and Associates.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12. Is there any discussion?
Oh, legislation. Yeah, I need to amend my motion. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that communication number 12 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
No, authorize.
Authorize legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12 and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into a agreement with IAAF Local 334.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 14.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to extend the contract with custom staffing for the Junk Auto Services.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that communication number 14 be received and filed. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 14. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 15.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation for a change order to ordinance 4714.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number 15 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 16.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to pay the Ohio EPA the annual license fee to operate.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication be received and filed, number 17, excuse me, 16 be received and filed. Legislation is on. Tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 16. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 17.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into various contracts for work on the Ottawa River.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number 17 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 17. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 18.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract with MWH.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number 18 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 18. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 19.
From the Auditor regarding contract labor report.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that communication number 19 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 19. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 20.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into consent legislation with ODOT.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number 20 be received and filed, and the Law Director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation and comply with the request.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 20 and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. There are petitions, reports of officials, Amy Odom, regarding collection of property maintenance assessments.
Mr. President, Mayor, Counsel, based upon a request by Mr. Lowe, providing an update on tax assessments. You, from time to time, as counsel, are asked to approve a placement of special assessments, or basically property maintenance charges, that are for cleanup or for penalties for violations of the City Property Maintenance Code. This is a quick overview for 2014, meaning from January 1 through to the end of November, as to what the property maintenance department is doing to basically recoup your tax dollars. I guess we always need to remind people that when the city takes action to clean up a property, we do everything we can to recoup those costs from the owner because the rest of us are paying for that if they do not take care of it themselves. This year, so far, there were over 3,360 parcels involved with property maintenance complaints and invoiced for some service. What you see before you is a breakout, basically, of the variety of different charges that were assessed. The over 898 received the full civil penalty, meaning the $350 charge. That's when they are given notice, asked to take care of a problem, and they don't. So a civil penalty is 350. An administrative fee is when we have to go out and take action and cleanup on this property. You will see that the administrative fees are actually larger than civil penalties. That's because that is also inclusive of administrative fees that are attached to our specified parcel program. The beginning of the year, when we do publish that long list of vacant properties, they are assessed, not only the cost per cutting, but if they do not take care of the property, there is an administrative fee involved. As for reduced civil penalties, basically, that initial notice that you may receive, and if a person takes care of it, it only remains at 50. 798 reduced penalties were issued. And then there were over 850 contractor cleanups, meaning over 850 instances where an individual work order had to be written for trash, weed, or board up on a property. So overall, the total dollars that were invoiced were $879,000 worth of charges in fees and contractor costs. Tax assessments, so far to date, and I need to make this clear, to date, we have assessed 1,751 of those. If you remember, last year, the county went to a new process where they are accepting our assessments once a year. Even though you may be approving them once a month, the county, in terms of placement, is placing them on twice a year. They're doing it in, we have to get all of our assessments to them in September, and then we get them again, I believe, in March. Help me, Mr. Giger, if you remember. I think that sounds correct. So to date, this is what we have placed. You'll also notice that very few of these are actually paid out in cash. The fees that actually come into the office, we've only collected about $41,000, and the remainder go on to tax collection. We have received, through the two tax payments we received this year, from the county, about I think the issue that Mr. Lowe was most concerned about are how are we doing to collect, and how are we monitoring and trying to pursue those persons who may have assets? One of the things that we are working closely with the Law Department with and have been for some time is that we do evaluate the assessments as they're being placed to try to determine, do these persons have assets? This is an example and one that is of concern. I think this is a bit of myth busting as well, in terms of who owns these parcels, who are causing the problems. Again, as I mentioned, there's about 3,360 parcels involved, but repeat, this is kind of interesting. In terms of repeat parcels, those that we, which have to go out to multiple times in a year, about 486 of those individual parcels have to be revisited several times. 360 people own those 486 parcels. So some of those owners, who are repeat offenders, own more than one parcel, and yet over 1,183 invoices are sent on those repeat parcels alone. So basically, about 35% of all invoices are going out to repeat offenders. Then about a third of our work are going to people who own, an owner who may own one or more parcels that we have to deal with multiple times within the same year. Basically, 17% of all the parcels that we deal with are repeat offender owned. What occurs is a process that has been established with the Law Department. As I stated, when tax assessments are placed with counsel, before their placement, they are reviewed by the Law Department. The Law Department then determines, do these persons have assets? And instead of simply placing it on taxes, it may be taken off the taxes and handled through several other legal processes. The most common pursuit is trying to get, basically, a lien on their properties or a judgment, which states that we would attach these costs to all of their properties with Allen County. The other is to, if it is truly a criminal process, to pursue them criminally. Unfortunately, under the property maintenance ordinance, the most, the highest criminal penalty, I believe, is a first degree misdemeanor, and that is only after repeated violations. You start at a fourth degree, I believe, and work your way up to a first, and I'll defer to the Law Department if I'm incorrect in that. These are the actions that we're currently taking for collection. As mentioned before, we do have our land bank program that if properties fall into a category where they are delinquent, certified delinquent by the county for more than two years, adjacent property owners may be eligible to acquire those properties, and we encourage that. We work with those property owners. The other thing we can do is if the taxes exceed the appraised value of the county appraisal of the property, we work with the county through their County Tax Equalization Board to, again, acquire those properties if there is an interested party and make those available to them. I think you can see that we do try very hard to collect those fees that all of us are paying out of our pockets. We welcome and encourage the continuing partnership with the Law Department to find other ways to collect those dollars. The other, last sheet you see there is a breakout, basically, of just the expenses for the property maintenance and our collections from year to year. I think that's also been a question. It is interesting, but tax collections seem to be cyclical. It seems like every other year, we get a bump. So you get an up year, and you get a down year, you get an up year and a down year. And I think it's because of the way taxes used to be assessed once a year, meaning our property taxes. Now that they've moved to the twice-a-year assessment, we're hoping that we have a more even collection and possibly a more profitable one. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
Yes, Ms. Odom, thank you very much for providing this information, but I want to challenge you. Couple of years ago, we had a land bank meeting where people were able to come in and get a little more informed on what the process is. I would like to see that done in January, if you could give me a date. And I don't know how we can advertise it outside of being here at council, but I would like to see that rans or individuals could just get a breast on what's really going down with the land bank. I tell you why, because I look at this, and I'm looking at the repeat offenders, but there's some, there's some parcels out there that need taken care of, and if we can get some tax from that, I don't understand why individuals wouldn't take advantage of that program.
You know, I-
So I just, I think it's beneficial to us time-wise. I think it's beneficial to our public schools. We need to do what we can to get these properties in people's hands. That's really, truly going to take care of it.
I'm in absolute agreement with you, Mr. Lowe. Last year, when we did the land bank meeting, we had a disappointing turnout. I would, I guess, challenge all the counselors, everyone who's listening to the program tonight, that when we do do this, we advertise it, we put it out on the media, we put it on our website, that they are welcome to attend. We also have all the information on the city website currently. If they have any questions, they are always free to call the department, and we're happy to see what we can do to connect them with those properties.
Thank you. Appreciate this.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I just want to echo a couple of things. The land bank been very good, getting some information out, and I appreciate that. We got folks in my ward been using it a lot and the information. Only thing, they want to speed up a little bit, but it's a process you got to go through.
Absolutely.
And that's what I'm telling you. We got to educate them more on it. It's not that the city can hand you that property overnight. It takes a little time. And they just say, I ain't got that, I didn't get it yet, I didn't get it yet. So if they come to this meeting and said they can get educated more on it, it's a process, and it's a great win-win program. So I love it because a lot of good folks been getting land, and they're using it for building garages, or they're using it for gardening, and different things like that. I know the Neighborhood Association had talked about getting land to build their own garden in the south in Lima. So there's a lot of good things we can do on that, but they all need to show up to the meeting, say they get educated what's going on. I get a lot of calls, and they'll be calling you, Amy, is it there yet at their home? And it's a process, you know? I know they got to go through the Law Director, a lot of hands got to go through. So that'd be great to have a meeting so you can get educated on that, and, you know, everybody to come out, they interested in getting land. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next, we have ordinance two fifty-four fourteen.
This is a third reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Speriani.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance two fifty-four dash fourteen be passed on its third reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two fifty-four fourteen on its third reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Mrs. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Adams, Mr. Glenn?
No.
Ordinance two fifty-four fourteen has been passed on its third reading by a five-to-three vote. Ordinance two sixty-nine fourteen.
Amending the two thousand and fourteen annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance two sixty-nine fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two sixty-nine fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Mrs. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
The motion, I'm sorry, the ordinance two sixty-nine fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote, regardless of the names that we call. Ordinance two seventy-fourteen.
Establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance two seventy-fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance two seventy-one fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Insight Public Sector.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance two seventy-one fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-one fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-one fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-two fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Perry Protec.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance two seventy-two fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-two fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-three fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-four fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Seamless Construction Company.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-four dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-three fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-three fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-five fourteen.
Amending ordinance nineteen fourteen.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-five dash fourteen be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-five fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-four fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-five fourteen.
Amending ordinance nineteen fourteen.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-five dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-five fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-five fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-six fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Benz Construction Inc. for demolition of residential structures during the two thousand and fifteen calendar year.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-six dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-six fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-six fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-seven fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ASC Group Inc.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-seven fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-seven fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-seven fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-eight fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to give consent to the Ohio Department of Transportation for improvements to State Route eighty-one east of the Indiana and Ohio Railroad intersection and ending at the limits of the Interstate seventy-five project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-eight dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-eight fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon, or, I mean, Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-eight fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two seventy-nine fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts with Customs Staffing for Engineering and Electrical Inspection Services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two seventy-nine fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two seventy-nine fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two seventy-nine fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance two eighty fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Patrick Staffing Inc. for Engineering Technician Services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two eighty dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two eighty fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two eighty fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance two eighty-one fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for certified building inspection services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two eighty-one dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two eighty-one fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two eighty-one fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance two eighty-two fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for non-certified building inspection services.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two eighty-two dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two eighty-two fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two eighty-two fourteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-one vote. Ordinance two eighty-three fourteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for plan review services for the two thousand and fifteen calendar year.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance two eighty-three dash fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two eighty-three fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two eighty-three fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote.
Amending section ten fifty-two point oh-three of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance two eighty-four fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two eighty-four fourteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I hope everybody's seen the changes in the garbage collectors this week. We've had it for about a week now. They're, they're not the same. They're certainly coming earlier to my house, that's for sure. So, keep your trash out early, and make sure, if you have any issues, call your council people, and they can help you through the issues. So, I don't think we've had a lot. We'd like to have this very seamless, but I'm sure it'll work out fine. So, if anyone's got any issues, call up to the utilities department or call your councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? While we're on the subject, I am going to, it's probably a miscellaneous business item, but since we're talking garbage, and, and, Mr. McLean, you brought up a point, they've been in, in several areas, at least in our neighborhood, quite early compared to what we had become accustomed to. And I happened to notice around noon or so, actually, I heard the trucks about six in the morning, but through the utilities department's assistance and through HCR, they did a very good job of coming back around. We happen to have a neighborhood area that was accustomed to noon, two, three, four o'clock in the afternoon, and the trucks were there at six, six-thirty, and I noticed around noon time that lots of people got caught off guard, as I did, and they did a wonderful job coming back around and taking care of it. So, credit to them. If there's no further discussion, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance two eighty-four fourteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance two eighty-five fourteen.
Authorizing the auditor to make payments to the state of Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance two eighty-five fourteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance two eighty-five fourteen on its first reading. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 285-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 285-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 286-14.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts for the Ottawa River supplemental environmental project as part of the U.S. EPA consent decree.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 286-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 286-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Everyone out there, this is part of our decree that we've had for the EPA, uh, to start our projects. This is gonna be planting some trees down the river, so that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 286-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 287-14.
Amending ordinance 4714.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Uh, I move that ordinance 287-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 287-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 287-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 288-14.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with MWH.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 288-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 288-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 288-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 289-14.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with IAAF Local 334.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that ordinance 289-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 289-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 289-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 290-14.
Amending ordinance 9114.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 290-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 290-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 290-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Miscellaneous business. Mrs. Miles.
Couple things. Uh, Westgate Neighborhood Association is meeting Sunday, December 21st at 6:00 P.M., Chamberlain's Baptist Junior Home. This will be a Christmas dinner only. There would be no meeting at, at this particular, um, time. So, those who wanna have a nice meal or just wanna fellowship here, December 21st, uh, a Christmas dinner at Westgate Neighborhood Association. And I just wanna take a few minutes here. As we enter into this Christmas holiday here, I, I just, I just feel like I need to just talk about the Christmas spirit and, and for those that not get, not to allow the cares and, and the stress of this time of the year to just bog us down and rob us of the opportunity to celebrate the joy that should be in this Christmas, Christmas season here. And so, um, there's a little thing here that I, that came to me one morning here. It says, and it stopped. I mean, stop all the madness, the craziness. It says, S, surround yourself with friends and family. Because during this time of the year, people are hurting, people are, like, suicide rate is high, and just spend time with family members, those that maybe you haven't connected with all year. Spend time with them during the holiday season. Uh, T, take time to rest. I mean, so many times, we get so bogged down with our schedule. We, we're doing, going here, we're going there. We just need to take time sometime to just rest and just, you know, it's, it's, you know, there's nothing wrong with just taking a, a couple hours or a day and just, if you can, just relax and just, it's, it's amazing what it'll do to your mind here. And O, is just open your heart to others. This is the time of the year where people are, should be giving to others, you know. Matter of fact, we should be giving all year round. And the empty stocking fund, the, uh, the toys for top, which we have a bear here, uh, for toys, and then, you know, Salvation Army, there's so many opportunities for us to give. I believe everyone in here is blessed, blessed. And so, and we need to give, you know, as, as it has been given to us. And lastly, pursue joy and peace. It's not something that comes automatically. It's something that you have to go after, the joy and the peace, especially during this holiday season. So, again, you know, have a great holidays, great Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, in the height of the things that have been going on in, in Ferguson, Missouri, things like that, one of the things that I would like to see us do as leaders of the community is be, uh, a little more proactive in things that we do to try to, to improve upon race relations. And also in the relationship between our police department, which they do a good job now, but I'd like to see it be, uh, more proactive. Our police department and some of the people in the community. I think that these kind of things are important so we keep those kind of disasters from coming here. Um, because Lima is a good place to live, and then we don't, we don't wanna have those kind of issues here. I don't. I'm a peace-loving man. I love all people, and, and I think that's where you gotta start. And so, my hopes are that as community leaders, again, that we can take steps in, in making sure that we don't have problems like this come to Lima. And the only other thing I have is what I always say, be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, I'm sure that you've seen across the city where you've got the little roads blocked off and the orange cones because we've had water issues all over the city, cable road. Look, this is nothing that the Utilities Department can change. They happen. We've got an old infrastructure, and we're reactive. When we see water coming out of the ground, we go and fix it. So, you have to understand that when it, when this happens, there may be some disruption of service. And we work very hard to make sure that you have your service back on it very quickly. They do a great job. There are some old pipes underneath this ground, and there's a lot of water pressure out there, so we're improving our water as we go. We've got, uh, you know, we've approved a lot of the headwork on the, to give us more pressures in certain areas, and I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna have more and more leaks. So, if you do spot one, please call the Utilities Department and, and report it so they can get it fixed. Um, you know, usually we have these dead of winter when it's even worse. It could be a lot worse, but it's still gotta be very miserable for those workers. So, Mr. Caprilla, Mr. Shealy, tell your workers they've done a great job and, uh, keep up what they're doing. And, uh, back to, uh, what Mrs. Miles said, you know, Christmas is a season of giving. And it's not just giving gifts or monetary stuff. It's giving of yourself. Enjoy. You have to have peace within yourself to be able to do that. Everything isn't so serious that you can't laugh and joke with your mankind.
That's right.
So, give yourself. Make a peaceful Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe.
Thank you. Mr. President, uh, December the 11th, which is Thursday at 6:00 P.M., I'll be holding the H.R. Committee to, uh, deal with the, the draft. What?
I thought we said Monday.
No, December 11th, Thursday. We dealing with the rough draft and reviewing that for changes. I would like to say thank you. There was a great Parents' Day over at North Junior High. Myself and Mr. Glenn, uh, was able to service the public. Another way of giving that's been brought up a couple times tonight. Uh, had a great time, and the, the kids had a good time. The parents came, shared lunch with them. There was nice, um, entertainment, uh, some giveaways. Uh, Ms. Yvonne Jones did a fantastic job, so hats off to her and North Junior High and what Lima City Schools are doing. I got a couple things I wanna speak on tonight. We brought up the water. The water's been brought up about us being reactive. That's really, really true. I would tell you, as, being a businessman in the downtown Lima area this week, I had three days where I could not work. And I spoke with, um, Salisbury at downtown and explained the situation. I know that it's nothing that our Utilities Department can run out and hurry up and fix. But again, we're dealing with infrastructure that is over a hundred-plus years old, and things happen. But as a newer business, i- it hurts when you can't work. And I have young ladies coming up that work with me who are trying to build their clientele, and they went three days. And I couldn't see it in my heart to even charge them for their rental space because I knew they didn't make the money that they should've had made. And then, I come in today, and again, the same situation. Uh, we dealt with a lot of chemicals, so there wasn't enough pressure, uh, to wash correctly. But things like that, i- it, I, I felt, I felt kinda helpless as a councilman. I, I really did. And, um, I just hope that whatever it takes, uh, we act very quickly on getting these fixed. You know, some of the, some of the individuals that came up to me, without them understanding not coming to council, you know, some of the things that came out their mouth is, they don't have no problem fixing their paycheck. Or they don't have problems getting raises, or they, they're screaming new businesses that come down, and you can't do nothing. You know, would they have reacted the same way if Rhodes State College was down here? How many workers would they have had out there to hurry up and fix it to get it together so those students could learn or do what they had to do? You know, and I tried to answer it to the best of my ability, but it does play in the back of your mind, what if? I ju- I just hope we get more proactive real quick with the infrastructure, especially in the downtown area and in the neighborhoods that need it the most. Uh, we need to find a way to get this money. That's just my personal opinion. Ferguson was also, oh, let me back up. On the, on the phone calls, I mean, on the water, Saturday morning when we were able to go in, uh, I went to work, showed up about seven. And about quarter to eight, I start seeing all these emergency vehicles parked downtown. Now, when Rhodes had their graduation, I said nothing. When UNOH had their graduation, I said nothing. Several events happened in the downtown area. If you're not aware of that, they do happen. Saturdays are pretty busy down here, and parking space is very, very limited. Again, as a new business, I looked at the same vehicle in the same parking spot from 8:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M. Now, if that been any normal person, they would've got removed or ticketed. We have a garage, so to whoever the individual was that coordinates this, I'm begging you, please, have them park in the garage. It was bad. I received phone calls when we didn't come in because we had nowhere to park. They didn't know they could use the back alley. Then when they did use the, too, they used the back alley, they seen the city signs, so they thought they couldn't park there either. So, I really had four days of nothing. And, and, and it hurt, it, it does hurt your pocket. So, I'm just, we need to sit down and talk to figure out a better way. Uh, and on the phone calls was, was really got me, and I haven't talked to the chief, but I know that there's some, some good officers over there. But when I called dispatch, I asked to speak to the desk officer because I just wanted to make a report to let them know, you know, what was really going on. And the phone rang about 25 to 30 times. And I called back, and I asked for a major lieutenant, a major or lieutenant. Everybody was busy. There was nobody in there, and I waited again. So, I called back, and you can check the records. I called back, and Officer Miracle and another gentleman came over. I can't remember his name. But they spoke very well. They spoke very well, and they did apologize, and they said they would make sure that it wouldn't happen again. I noticed, I don't know how many times a year they do it, but I do remember about this time, they did a big intense training. But I wanna say to those officers, you did good because the individuals that was in the salon, they had negative reactions to what was going on. And once, uh, Officer Miracle, I wish I knew the other gentleman's name, uh, came in and they spoke, they really turned the perception of LPD around. So, I just wanna say, you know, thank you from Miracle for his professionalism and the other gentleman, uh, 'cause they were just as upset as I was. I'm gonna be honest with you. Ferguson also was brought up. I spoke with the chief maybe two, three weeks ago. You know, Lima is a hotspot, and, and we're no different, in my opinion. We're no different than what's going on in Ferguson. But my challenge is, a lot of people have called me, a lot of people have text me, Facebook, "Mr. Lowe, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?" And I put it right back on there, "What are you gonna do?" And, and I spoke with him, and one of the things that LPD is having difficulties in with is to get minorities to take the test. Now, we complain, and we gripe, and we fight the system, but no one wants to take the test to be a part of the system and be a solution to the system. I'm asking any minority, I challenge you to take the test. I challenge you to be the change. I challenge you to be the, the leader in our community so that we don't have these situations that they're having out in Ferguson. You know, they, they deal with, I don't know if many of you know, that day of Ferguson, one individual was shot. But in Chicago, 13 of us killed each other as black men, and no one said anything. That bothers me. You know, when somebody gets shot, it's always a, a problem. Uh, you got the media out there, and, and they hype it up, and, but the media never reports the nonviolent movements. You never hardly ever see that. And, and to me, sometimes when I sit back, I see ancestors of, of my people, they're probably screaming from their graves right now. 'Cause we're enslaved mentally in America, and we need to be the individuals to make the change. In Lima, I hear young guys all the time say, you know, "We don't see officers of, of color." Well, you don't. Take the test. We don't see firefighters of color. We, we, we know the couple that are there, but we cool with them, but we don't see no more. Take the test.